Obviously, this meeting is being recorded and it is a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the West Concord Advisory Committee, both of which have quorums present. And we don't need to do a roll call vote because everybody's in the room. Okay, we will do a roll call vote then. I, Andrew Boardman, am present. Is Abby Flanagan here?
Present.
Awesome. Linda Miller?
Here.
Rob Almeida?
Here.
Awesome. We have now done the roll call vote.
I, Susan Milennick, am here and I will do a roll call vote. So Nicole, are you here?
I am here.
Allison, are you here? Linda, are you here?
I'm here.
Barbara?
Yes.
Great. And Greg?
Present.
Awesome.
We just have our next future Planning Board member. As of tomorrow. She'll get sworn in.
Just go to courthouse.
Right.
Awesome. So with that, we thought it would be good as we start the new cycle of goals and projects and what people are planning for next year, it'd be a good moment to have a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the West Concord Advisory Committee in part to figure out where areas we can improve are with liaisoning between the two committees as well as so that could be better coordination, it could be streamlining processes as well as discussing the West Concord Advisory Committee's charge, which is probably more restrictive than it needs to be as far as geography and zone of interest is, as well as discussing potential updates to the governing documents of the West Concord Advisory Committee, which are, I mean, I looked at them, they're slightly out of date in the sense that they talk about a lot of things in the future that have already happened a while back, you know, when Bruce Freeman comes through, when street improvements occur, you know, all these things that have sort of come and gone and now as we look to the future, it's better to have the next step planned as opposed to resting on your laurels, I guess, for lack of a better term. So with that, I thought we could begin the discussion of what, where, I guess you all see the lumps, for lack of a better word. I mean, I know that one of the areas of contention that we have seen in the past from developers is there's multiple committees that have seemingly overlapping jurisdictions and they felt like they were coming and giving the same presentation multiple times. So one thing that we had discussed in just our brief, you know, discussion of something that would make a lot of sense and maybe smooth the road and then people can look at what they're supposed to look at is having a joint meeting when there is a relevant planning slash West Concord Advisory item. That way, the developer can give one overarching presentation that is comprehensive and it doesn't feel like they have to give the same forty-five minute presentation to multiple committees the same week and coordinating all that extra man-hours and all that stuff. And then it would get everybody on the same page of at least what other committees are concerned about, so that we don't end up with a lot of duplicative meetings and things. So that was just one item I noticed or have
Yeah.
seen and we discussed.
I totally agree. I feel like streamlining the developer process would serve us well also because in some cases, we hear from the developers multiple times and we know that then they come to you multiple times and it's hard to keep straight what they're telling you versus what they've told us. One thing I've also noticed is sometimes when they come to us, they don't have as much documentation as they do when they come to you all. They almost kind of like use us as maybe a practice run and that sometimes keeps us from digging as deeply maybe as we should with their plans.
No, that's an interesting point because yeah.
Interesting because, but when they, unless they're coming to the West Concord Advisory Committee, just conceptually to get your thoughts before they file, every, everything that the Planning Board sees once the application gets filed is, is the same exact things that West Concord Advisory Committee would see.
I like, I don't doubt that eventually we see, you know, the continuum of what they presented to you, but like I can think of some examples of when materials were shown, like say on the screen share that the developer was doing with us and then those very same materials didn't show up on your Planning Board website, you know, for another week or two and it keeps us from being as, I guess, thoughtful about providing our feedback when, when all we really get to see is just like a couple of seconds on a Zoom screen share from them.
Okay. I think, I think that's an, an internal process
Okay.
item that we can take care of in the Planning Division.
Okay. Like, yeah, if whatever they are sharing maybe with both of our committees, like if it can be posted a couple of days in advance, at least maybe there's, you guys have a rule as far as like how much in advance it has to be posted, so you all can review it before they show up in front of you. But like, we would love that same courtesy so that we're able to dig into those materials and be ready with questions versus just like seeing it for the first time when they're presenting to us.
I would just say sometimes that seems to be a function of the developer.
Oh, okay. I see. Okay.
But I'm not sure that we can educate them more than, I'm sure the staff is, is after them, but
Okay. Yeah, part of it. Yeah, so part of, and, and I don't want to take away from the, you know, the conversation of, you know, about the going through the charge. But from the Planning Division's side managing the applications, it's trying to shepherd things along in, in a good, I'm going to say a good flow and a good process. But, and most applicants, I mean, Pat, Pat knows, most applicants are, are, are very responsive about, it's like, okay, well, we needed at least a few days in advance so people can look at it and, and you, you know, they're not trying to react during the meeting. Because that, that never goes well. It never goes smoothly. But there, and there are certain, you know, recent examples and, and I'm not going to use, you know, Pat said, you know, the Children's Center, that was, you know, a great project and, and, you know, it moved along. And there's, and recently, there's been a couple where the developer just is not being forthcoming with things. We're still working on it. We're still working on it. We're still working on it. And I, I, I think it's, it's probably a conversation, you know, with Planning Board and, and sometimes it's, you know, it's the Planning Board's even making a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. So that's where I think that coordinated meeting, especially if it's a Board of Appeals project and, you know, they're not having to go to three different boards, but even coordinated project when it is just the Planning Board. If, if something isn't submitted, at least a couple of days in advance, at least for West Concord Advisory Committee, then it gets taken off the agenda.
Okay.
The Planning Board, you know, if it's a Planning Board project, doesn't have that luxury and, and neither does the Board of Appeals when there's an actual notice public hearing. Because it, it has to, the minute it gets noticed for a certain date and time, it has to be on that agenda. But, you know, it, it would be, information wasn't submitted to the Planning Board and West Concord Advisory Committee in, you know, you know, two days prior and so they didn't discuss it. And then the Board of Appeals will say, you know, thank you, you know, you've now submitted it, go back to a joint meeting with the Planning Board and, and because they require a recommendation on the Planning Board on, on certain projects. So I think that's kind of going to be an, an internal process that the Planning Division can work on and we can make it a little bit more succinct in our application procedures that, you know, if you're within this area, you know, you know, there'll be a joint meeting with the West Concord Advisory Committee and the Planning Board and so I think we'll work on that, that description for the application procedures.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great. Okay. Do any of you all have thoughts about this proposal of having joint meetings when developers are coming about plots of land that are within West Concord?
It seems like a good idea because on some of the proposals that have come to us recently, I'm not sure the developer is clear on what role we actually play. And in some cases think that we have more control than we really do have. We really are an advisory committee and come to us multiple times and then sometimes throw their hands up and say, the heck with you, I'm going to the plan. I'm, yeah, I'm just going to keep moving along. Which isn't really the way that we want the whole proceed, we want, we don't want developers or anybody to come away with that sense.
Yeah.
But if they, if they've been to us, well, in some cases, three or four different meetings and it takes the entire meeting, and sometimes the comments change from one meeting to another and yet those comments are even different than what the Planning Board might say. So I think anything where we can do that in one meeting is a good idea.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it'd be helpful to just run through the charge.
But yeah, we're not going to be able to read that.
You're going to read it out loud though, aren't you?
I might have. I'm not sure. What's that? What's that?
Yeah, there we go.
Can you still see that, Abby? Yeah, okay. Susan, do you have our, our notes from what we talked about from the last meeting?
Um, I think I run through.
Yes. Because you guys had a very good discussion.
Yeah. Yes, yes, let's see. Yeah, so I think we had said that we really wanted to look at the area that is supposedly our area of focus, which I have printed out right here. I think that was like the number one thing that Elizabeth said that we should talk about. And this sort of strange polygon is the, the area that WCAC is supposed to be focused on and I think Elizabeth pointed out, it's the sum total of the commercial, business and industrial space.
Business, West Concord Village and West Concord Industrial.
But there's a lot less industrial than there was probably when that was.
Yeah.
So I'm going to
Pull that up if you have it.
And meanwhile, like, interesting and maybe like things that are happening in West Concord that we'd like to be a part of the conversation on are occurring such as MCI, maybe two-two-two-nine Main, other things that have yet to surface. But will be, you know, kind of left out of the conversation if our area of sphere of influence is restricted to that polygon.
I, I'm not a touchscreen person, so apologize.
I think that map is like in the mass, is it in the master plan somewhere? It's in like H five with a master plan or something.
Um, so currently it's, um, this Um, so currently it's this hatched area right here, which is the West Concord Industrial District. It's the screen area, which is West Concord Village. It's this hatched area, which is West Concord Business. This is West Concord Industrial and then all of this hatched area, which is West Concord Business. So geographically speaking.
Spencer, can you show me where the prison is?
Yep.
It's where the, between the river and the train tracks.
Right, right here. Let me turn the zoning off because it doesn't really a lot of patterns there. So this is the prison.
Okay.
Uh, this is Junction Village owned by the Concord Housing Development Corporation. Um, this is all of the Baker Ave- new Baker Avenue area. Which is excluded from our, right now, which is another area that we And I think Concord Park is excluded too. Yep, Concord Park is excluded right here.
Yeah.
And, and do we know sort of the, the history of why these areas was selected? I don't know. I don't know the, the history. It's been a while since I've read the West Concord master plan. I'd have to read it again, but I
I looked through it. I didn't
I didn't see why, why it got selected. I think it was a very focused master plan on those commercial districts.
Right.
But I, I, I
And, and so obviously the, the prison existed at the time the plan was written, but not anything that had a good effect was Baker Avenue. All those buildings, were they as well?
Those were in two thousand and ten. Um, I think the hotel was being
Okay, so those really weren't fully considered at the time.
No.
I'm thinking in terms of
No.
the master plan.
No, because Harvard Vanguard, I think, had already been built. And the hotel was being already considered. And so all of this, the rest of this stuff was here.
It was there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
It was genren. The big building was genren. Has been there for fifty, seventy-five years probably at this point.
So I think, I think geographically, and this is what we talked about at the West Concord Advisory Committee, you, you can't really just, you can't say, you know, southwest of Route Two. But I think you can, you know, when you think about the influences, you know, within, you know, the West Concord Village, um, you know, I think you get to Ornak. And and I think, I think anything that's going out Main Street, you know, has, has an impact on the village.
Yeah, because like that map didn't include even Fowler Library, much less like all the way to Damon Mill. You know, like things that you would think of as West Concord, it stops really short.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think it includes the youth theater building.
Nope.
And it only has one side of Commonwealth Ave., right?
Uh, no, it's got both sides. Does it have? Yeah, both sides are in the West Concord Village District.
Okay.
So it includes that, includes Bradford Mill. But, you know, it doesn't include down Loasbrook. It doesn't include Ride Out Playground and not, not that, you know, the Planning Board. And this was the other thing we kind of talked about, was you know, West Concord Advisory Committee is, is an advisory committee to the Planning Board. If, if the Rec Department does something at Ride Out Playground, the Planning Board's not going to be involved. And or Warner's Pond. Warner's Pond. The Planning Board's not, that's an environmental, you know, discussion that the natural resources, you know, basically, I'm going to say they're like jurisdiction. So, but the, the built environment and that's why I think in the original charge, Public Works could, you know, having West Concord Advisory Committee liaison and, and, you know, be involved, Public Works, when there's roadway improvement projects like Kenny Dunn Square. You know, that, that's a, you know, that's kind of the built environment that, that can impact, you know, land use and, and the development patterns and, and that's, that's the purview of the Planning Board and in, and in some cases, the Board of Appeals when a special permit's required. So
Samerson part of the West Concord?
No.
Was what? Emerson Hospital?
Oh, no, no. But, you know, anything that happens, you know, in this area, you know, definitely has, you know, an impact, you know, on potential impact on West Concord.
And we just circled, is that where Emerson Hospital is now?
Emerson Hospital's right here. Okay. This is New England Deaconess. And this is these seven parcels right here, the ones that Emerson, Emerson Hospital is selling. Oh, interesting. Okay. And this is the golf course.
It's interesting that the person who's proposed a small development across from Concord Green did come and talk to us, but that's not, it's not actually included in our geographical area right now.
And, and that's where we get into that conversation of one developer versus another.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Matt, Matt Seppi
Right.
is a different kind of developer.
Yes.
He's also moving into his house on Pond, on, I think it's Pond, Pond Street. Off, off the sunny side, over here somewhere.
Okay.
Or Warner Street somewhere over here. But, but yeah, he's, you know, he's been in Concord a long time and
So that was his choice to come and talk to us, yeah.
Because he, he has that understand, that understanding. So I, I think, you know, geographically, you know, you're thinking, you know, Route Two to Ornak. And and, and I think, you know, then it, then it's the, you know, conversation if an application comes in, you know, there's, you know, there's a conversation between the Planning Board and and, and maybe when the application comes in, it's a conversation that, you know, between the two chairs. Saying, okay, PBD, PBD School, the town meeting decided to sell the property to a developer.
Yeah.
That's definitely, you know, potential, you know, and, and, you know, an impact or, you know, that. But
But I'm, I'm, I guess, I'm not sure, you know, if we're going to take this, I guess, to the Select Board.
Yep.
You know, how, how you would cogently say other than anything that's, you know, sort of southwest of Route Two. You know, what, what is the rationale? Like what, because the
Well, so from a, from a, a, a land use pattern and, you know, a traffic pattern, I think you think, you think, you know, anything that's coming up, Old Marlboro, but you know, into the village.
I'm kind of thinking of, aren't we, like, we just said we didn't want to be duplicative, you know? And so that, I'm not quite sure that there's, like, is there, are there issues that are central to West Concord in that, that wouldn't be considered by the Planning Board? I mean, I, again, I don't want to like clone little, you know, clone another Planning Board when you have a Planning Board. So I want to understand really why is it significant for the West Concord Advisory Committee to be looking at a very much broader area. Not, not that that's not valuable, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not really sure how to
Can I ask a newbie question? Um, I'm wondering what the genesis was for the West Concord Advisory Committee, what, what drove that? I'm also wondering if it happens in other towns where you would have a Planning Board, but then you'd have an advisory committee for a particular area in that neighborhood.
Yeah, not, not to the, the second question, um, you know, not that I'm aware of, but, you know, other communities have, you know, Acton has the, you know, Architectural Design Review Board that, and, and that they look at everything and advise. So it, it kind of really depends on, you know, each community has different processes. I, I think the, from what I understand, was when the West Concord Master Plan, they also have the design guidelines and it was having people in, you know, West Concord or I'm going to say more in tune to, you know, what's happening, you know, in the village and in those areas.
Well, we sort of have three business districts. You know, Concord Center, the Depot and West Concord Center. And so maybe it arose out of that need to specifically address at least one of those two areas. And I know the Depot kind of gets smushed in with the center of town.
And I think part of it came about too because my recollection was that there was concern at some point about there's the HDC in Concord Center which protects the character of the town and there's nothing in West Concord. Like, it's kind of one of those Lorax, like who speaks for the trees kind of thing, where if you don't have somebody who's at least in tune with and, and what, what it's supposed to be, you know, it's not supposed to be tearing it down and putting up, you know, what, whatever. You know, a glass box or whatever, because that's the cheapest thing to do, you know, that, that's not what it's supposed to be. So if there isn't someone to speak for the trees, you have to kind of find that person. And I think that's what the drive was. Or at least that's my recollection. I don't know if I was in town at that point.
My impression is sometimes other, like, like perhaps larger towns than Concord would have various business districts and they sort of have, have plans or master plans for each of those districts. Um, and I sort of felt coming into this, like, well, we started with West Concord, but we didn't get to Concord Center and, or we didn't get to the Road Depot. It's, it's kind of like we, we started with a, a very concentrated focus on an area that seemed to believe that it, it, it needed some study and some in focus, uh, in terms of development. But then we, we haven't necessarily made the application to other areas that might equally, um, I don't know, Virginia Road or some, you know, some area that really might need at the same sort of balance of community interest that, that interacts with the Planning Board. So I'm, I understand that it, especially with MCI, I mean, with everything's going on, especially MCI Concord um, and also the Noble Project and Baker Avenue. But I, I'm not sure that, you know, sort of telescope, telescope
Expanding out.
Expanding out to all of West Concord. That I, that I can rationalize that as what is defining West Concord Advisory Committee. I just, I have to think about this.
I'm also concerned that if you make it too much bigger, this is a small advisory committee and how many different things that we're going to be asked to weigh in on.
I mean, when you look at the richness of the work that was done on that twenty-ten plan and all of the ambitions that are in there, a lot of which have been met, but others, I, I just don't know if they have or haven't been. It seems to me that that there's a lot still to do and, and just throwing the gates open. And I'm not sure is near term, what I was thinking would, would be the focus. Um, but I like, I like the idea of particularly MCI Concord and Baker Avenue and, um, like you say, some some of the areas that are, you know, just obviously, they're obviously there, but how do you distinctly say that um, they, that they should be? If it's, if it's a radius
Yeah.
Approach.
And somebody who knows this better could probably, doesn't the natural, the National Registry of Historic Places use like contributing structures? So basically saying like, this structure in itself isn't really important, but it contributes to this and, and that, that, that's how they often define historic districts and which, which are in there. So like you're saying, look, these houses in and of themselves aren't particularly important, but taken together, they are cumulatively important. And I wonder if that's the mantra, that it's not, you know, I look at, I look at going down Main Street away from And I wonder if that's the mantra, that it's not, you know, I look at, I look at going down Main Street away from. Away from Fowler Library towards. Um, you know, the town line and you see. What are effectively old row houses and stuff which are nicely up and like throwing in random things may. Random large developments may. Do something to that and whether it's, it's somebody literally affirmatively saying, no, it's too far or. Yes, it actually is very close to Damon Mill and I have thoughts on this. It's out of character, it's whatever, could be, you know, something to consider. Um, I know there was that development across the street where they preserved the old house sort of. But there was something, I can't remember exactly what happened with that, but there was a protected house that kind of got modified a lot. And.
A Riverwalk?
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember exactly what the story was, but I remember people were upset that they did something.
Yeah, he took that down, the historic house and had to rebuild it, but we're dealing with that in our neighborhood in a couple of different places. For example, there are six houses where I live, there's a moratorium of over a year. Because the six houses on this one corner were very important to the prison and to the mill. So when you're talking about the houses along Main Street with your back to Fowler, all of those in some ways had some sort of significance. With that placement.
But that would, you know, that would not be something that the planning board's gonna be involved in. So I think that kind of gets back to, to, you know, to Linda's. Um, thing that, you know, maybe and. And and from, just, you know, purely from my perspective, um, you know, the prison and Baker Ave and. Baker Ave Extension, which, um, I don't know why they didn't just name it all Baker. And 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 Concord Park, just, you know, it's smack dab in the middle. But um, at least expanding to include those two items. Um, you know, makes perfect sense, cause well, yes, Novo, you know, was gonna be built, but. A lot of those other office buildings, you know, we're not, not going back to that type of office environment. And, you know, a couple of them are getting to the end of their life cycle as well. So, um, you know, maybe, you know, this is the other item. Also on the plate, but as far as updating the West Concord Master Plan. There's gonna be a master planning study for the prison, which there's going to be. It should just update the West Concord Master Plan, pull in the prison, pull in Baker Ave and, and. Do a, a really good update.
That footprint is gonna be like symbiotic, all those little pieces are gonna fit together symbiotically to create like this vibrant village. And we would love to make sure we foster that and, you know, optimize it.
I mean, I can see that you could go back to twenty ten and say, a lot of this has been accomplished. And now that, you know, there's these other areas that need. Um, the attention and have the attention of the community and, and need the developmental. Um, attention, um, that is an integrated process.
Yeah.
Now, that just to me makes like. Uh, you know, is a very sound. Place to go from. Um, and a lot to do, so.
Yeah.
Do you think it would be helpful to speak to some of the people who've worked on the Master Plan? Plan or were at the beginning of the West Concord Advisory Committee? Like Gary Kleinschmidt or some of the others, if they'd be willing. Sue was on some of those.
Sue Dalschen was on those. Yeah, and I mean, Gary Kleiman, I was on that plan and then he was also on the envisioned Concord. Committee was one of the co-chairs. Right.
Yeah.
But I, I can tell you from, from my perspectives, the town moves forward. Um, you know, we found out from. That the, the current bill that's going, um, and budget that's going through the legislature. Um, the Senate. Included four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Concord. To use for planning, studying for MCI Concord. Um, so, uh, I. My conversation is, is that what happens at MCI Concord? There's a direct effect to what happens at Baker Ave and there's, there's a direct effect to what happens to the village. So we have this good two thousand and ten Master Plan, you know, well, let's do an update. Um, that takes all of those items into consideration. Uh, and so that's the direction that, you know, I'm going. So I think if the charge gets updated to incorporate those, those areas. Um, that, that's a, a good segue to. Use those funds that, you know, coming from the state and as the town works with, um, Department of Capital Assets. Management Maintenance.
Decan.
Decan. I, I think that the town can make a really strong case uh, to do that.
I think I saw somewhere in the Master Plan where it talks about history, but there were three elements that went into. Creating West Concord and one of them was the reformatory. And then two other small neighborhoods. So I think this might be very supportable. Um, and maybe, you know, the historical commission might have some ideas too about. This, yeah.
I'd love to see all the white ladies. I just thought that was, I mean, and they're, you know, all duplexes right along there, that would look really big.
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to go back to the charge? Is that big enough? Did you make it one bigger, I think?
I think, um, I have a question about how the design guidelines would then interrelate with the Master Plan. Should we update the Master Plan? Does that mean that design guidelines refreshed would flow from the Master Plan?
I, I, I would, I would be hesitant to try and do both at the same time. But maybe one can be done after the other.
Okay.
And but maybe they can be done at the same time. You know, I never thought about it.
I was just trying to think about, I mean, those two documents seem to be pretty central to what we're trying to do as a committee. And so if the, um, if the Master Plan. Paints a certain picture, we would, I think, want the design guidelines to bolt into that, right?
I, my, the design guidelines are, are, um, am- amazing, but I think there are also things that. You would probably consider today that in twenty ten, maybe weren't as pertinent or thought about in terms of things like. Sustainability and environmental, you know, and then that, that's why I agree with Elizabeth to try and do them both at once.
Okay.
Would be like really heavy lifting, um, ju- in thinking that you could accomplish that. But, um, certainly it would be wonderful to refresh those. But and there's such a strong basis that you have already. So it, it's a great document, you do wanna get to it, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and part of the, you know, part of the reality is. The, the planning effort, um, and I haven't confirmed this yet, but I think it's true. If that money comes out of this budget, I, I think we have to spend it by June thirtieth of next year. So I mean, that's, that's a short timeframe, um, to try and get stuff accomplished. So, you know, we're, we're already starting to think about it's like, okay. You know, what, what, what would a scope of work look like?
Yeah.
And so we have the envisioned Concord scope of work to start with, so we're not starting from scratch, but. We, you know, it, it would be something that's gonna have to happen. Almost immediately once the governor signs, you know, if it's still in there by the time the governor signs it, wow.
So is there a separate committee for that? Like, how would that money be? Like, who will be responsible for doing all that? Is it us? I mean, it's not us, is it? Or?
Um, n- no, but I mean, so there is, uh, you know, a newly formed MCI Concord Committee. They a task force or an advisory, been a task force? Yeah, so I, I think you would probably see that committee working, um, with, you know, the West Concord Advisory Committee. Planning Board, you know, all those other stakeholders. Um, and, you know, hiring a consultant.
Yeah.
Um, who will probably have sub consultants, one specifically for community engagement. Um, and one, you know, specifically probably to do all of the mapping and, you know, data collection and. You know, all of that. We would probably end up planning some public hearings, so.
We're trying to get as many of our neighbors and interested parties to come and hear the consultant, either like on Zoom or in person hybrid.
So that's right there, the WCI can be a focal point.
Um, so, yeah, what I probably, uh, see is that, um, from what. Linda and I went through for the MBTA communities and what was involved with, with that. We're probably going to, um, see a scope of work that. A lot of times you see, you know, there's community engagement in the beginning and then, you know, some, you know, the consultant goes off and, you know, writes stuff. And then there's, you know, a public meeting and then things move forward. I think what you're probably gonna see is a scope of work where community engagement will happen throughout the whole entire thing. Um, it is the most expensive component of the scope of work for a consultant, just cause it's just, it's time. And, um, but I, I think, uh, I think that. The, yeah, the experience that we had and the need to have that, just that constant. Uh, input and I think this is where if, um, the. MCI Concord Task Force does embark on this and, you know, we are successful and, you know. Getting the West Concord Master Plan updated, include MCI Concord and Baker Ave. Um, I can see this is where members of the committee would be doing what, you know, Linda and I did. It's like, you know, we're having, you know, a coffee hour at, you know, the Dunkin's and there's gonna be two members from. One member of the task force and one member of West Concord Advisory Committee there, just to, you know, answer questions and. I, I, I see that from a, from the planning division perspective for projects that, you know, we're gonna be involved in. I see that be, kind of becoming the norm and having these dedicated webpages. Um, specific to, you know, projects and not necessarily boards or committees. You know, you have your board and committee page, but you know what? You don't have to search through that whole page to find the topic you want. And, um, that's something that we're, we're starting to kind of transition over to. For joint meeting, I seem to be doing a lot more.
I think, uh, in terms of our review of these, uh, of this committee charge. I think like on page two, we had an item that we thought we might wanna update, which is, um. Item three, like which is at the very top. At least three voting members will have a connection to West Concord as like a resident property owner, local business operator or tenant. I think we were, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't we thinking that we wanted more members than just three to have? That kind of association with West Concord?
We weren't totally in an agreement from what I remember.
Okay.
This, I think.
Was it a majority, a majority?
We said two thirds and then Barbara was mentioning, yeah, it could be different.
Not just to restrict it to people who live in West Concord or have a connection through their business or what have you, but to have a majority. But I always think it's valuable to reach out to people who may not think about things the same way that we do. Um, and then there also comes the definition of, all right, where, where are we defining what is West Concord? If it's somebody who lives out at nine acre corner, is that still considered West Concord? Um, you know, that's, there is no definition of the boundaries of it. So I have no problem, and maybe we have to make it a little bit more specific in terms of what a connection is, I don't know. Um, but that we should, and we, particularly in reference to whatever might happen at MCI. I think there's probably hardly a person in the town of Concord who's not thinking about that. And therefore to include people who may not directly live there or have a business in whatever we consider West Concord to be. Is a valuable thing to add to a group. Now, whether we get anybody who wants to, to join from other parts of the town, I have no idea. Because we just recently upped our numbers.
Right.
So that we're, uh, so we don't have trouble getting a quorum, but that's a problem with all the committees in town. But maybe if people understand that part of what we will be looking at are things like the Baker Ave developments. Maybe we could just get rid of the extension part and rename the part on the other side of Route two. And MCI, maybe we do draw people who don't necessarily live there to have a, a contribution to the conversation.
Yeah, I can see if we were able to pick up someone who had specific skills, but who was a resident of, like, the. I don't know, the other side of Route two Concord.
We did talk about the fact that although we have wonderful people on the committee right now, um, the specific skills is a little thin.
So, all right, so if the committee has how many? Seven voting members, right? If we wanted to have the majority of them be having a connection to West Concord. We could change the thing to say at least four voting members?
Well, the majority.
The majority, then if it ever changes.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if seven would ever change, then you would have to change the four to something else.
Right, or if the committee becomes down on a couple of people, like if we don't have, you know, eight. Five instead or something, then the majority could still be applied.
Well, your charge says seven, that's how many members you have. Whether you have bodies sitting in a seat, doesn't change. You, you're a seven-member committee.
Okay.
So for you to have, to me, you have, you know, you have to have four members. To have a meeting.
If you write four members, they all have to be West Concord.
Yeah, so that means we would be in a position of like kicking someone off our committee if we.
If you write an actual number there, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm talking, I'm just talking about quorum.
Yeah.
So if you're, if you're a seven-member committee, you have to have four members present to meet. If you only have five members, cause you have two vacancies, you still need four members to meet. Your, your, the quantum of a quorum doesn't go down, just because you don't have, you have vacancies.
Right, I guess what I was thinking about is like, if you put a constant there, so you're saying three or four or five voting members must have a connection to West Concord. If you then like lose members from your seven, you might have the situation where you have, I don't know, three voting members. Who are from West Concord and, or like two that are from West Concord and four who are from East Concord. And therefore you're not meeting the requirement of how many West Concord affiliates you would have. I guess they don't wanna get us in a situation where our committee can't operate, just because we're being super picky about whether someone comes from West Concord or not.
But that wouldn't affect the quorum, would it? Right, I mean, you said, you could have four people and zero.
I, I, the only time I think it would, um, become an issue is, so you have seven members and if you say four members, you shall have a connection. And so you have a full quorum and. Two members, you know, go off and they, they move and so you only have five. And you have interest from people that. And you have interest from people that may have skills that you're looking for, but you know, they. Don't live in West Concord proper.
Whatever that might be.
And, and the select board says, well, you don't have a majority of members with the Con- West Concord connection. And so they pass by somebody, and so now you're struggling because you only have five members. Um, so I just. Um, a, a.
Is there, is, I, I don't know, and I'm new, is there a, a, a strong likelihood that. People who don't have some sort of connection to West Concord, other than the MCI thing, are going to wanna be interested?
I don't, I don't have any idea.
I mean, it's not just MCI, it'll be also Baker Ave at that point, too.
Yeah.
It's a lot, that impact on Route Two. So. Just to consider that.
I think Barbara was the one that mentioned it, you know, there may be somebody. Who, who lives up Little Road, but, you know, they shop in, you know, West Concord all the time. I don't know. I don't know. I don't, so, um. From, from my perspective as a planner. Anybody who has an interest in the community, wants to serve on a committee.
Right.
Yeah, ha- has an interest.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I do think there should be, you know, a goal. To have, you know, a members, you know, property owners, local business operators. You know, um. Even, even renters, you know, a, a goal to have that type of variety, I, I think is good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, expect, you know, local business operators. There's a lot of local business operators that aren't Concord, you know, residents.
Mm-hmm.
And, um. I, you know, they bring a different, a much different perspective, so they, you know, it can be a goal to have. A variety of members that, you know, have these different Concord connections. And you can put it that way and put no number on it.
So what, just call it a majority or, or not put any nu- numerical value or?
I, I think having the most flexibility is to the benefit of the.
Just taking it up.
I mean, as you were saying. I, I think if you, you know, it, um, including in the charge, you know. Property owners, local business operators, because they may not be, they may not be Concord citizens.
Hmm.
So if, unless it's in the charge, I think the select board always appoint Concord citizens to boards and committees. Um, I know that EVC has some business owners that aren't Concord citizen. But that's cuz it's in the charge.
So this is giving them more flexibility by, by saying at least three voting members shall have a connection. And specifying that the connection doesn't have to be Concord resident, this is making it more flexible.
Flexible, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, are we comfortable leaving it with the three here? Do you wanna make it even more open? We wanna reduce the amount that have to have the connection. We'll always get people who are. Concord resi- residents, property owners, local business operators or tenants of Concord at large, right? The question is. This three, that stipulates that those folks have to actually have that relationship with West Concord and not just. Concord.
So Elizabeth, can I chime in for a second? Um, so my suggestion would be, as. Uh, has noted that, um. You know, it, it is really difficult to find people for a lot of these, um, committees, and I think you can make it. Broad, but emphasize what you're actually looking for, and so I would draft something along the lines of. It's the goal of the W C A C, um, that voting members shall have a strong connection to West Concord such as. Resident, property owner, local business operator, tenant, active community member, or local subject matter expert. So that kind of encapsulates that. It's your goal, you want a strong connection, flexible as to what that actually is. Gives you flexibility in terms of number and then expands it, as you were saying, if you have like a local subject matter expert. That you wanna bring on. Um, and then I think active community member is a nice. Broad term for, as you said, somebody who maybe has a kid. You know, who goes to early intervention and always goes to the salt box to get a coffee and then walks up, you know, somebody who's just in and about. The, the area, so I think that could be a way that you're broadening the reach of who you could bring on. But you're also maintaining the focus on that you want a strong connection. Um, so that would be just from my perspective in terms of drafting, how I might change it. To give you a little bit more flexibility, but emphasize that you're really looking for people that have a strong connection to West Concord. So that's my, that's my two cents.
I like that. What do you all think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that addition, uh, on strong. Um, just to emphasize that.
Yeah, I think you, uh, early intervention's a good example, Concord Children Center's another good example, but straw people from all over the place.
Mm-hmm.
Those parents might be interested, um, because they have a direct connection, what's going on, but not necessarily live. In whatever we're defining as West Concord.
If we're, if we're looking for any two cents, if I'm allowed to do that. Um, I think it's, it's an assumption that there wouldn't be people. Um, necessarily living on the other side of Route Two would be really interested in this. I think. We want to set up a tone for the town that we're one town and we have two really vital. Yeah, right. So I wouldn't want to exclude, um, or have any language in there that makes someone feel like, oh, this isn't my committee because.
Or you can't come on this committee cuz you don't live in the right place. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
So is there wording there that works, Susan?
I think so, yeah. I think, um, we can always kind of go back to what Abby said, maybe, and throw that in there. Yeah.
I think, and anyone who is interested in joining the committee comes to one of our meetings.
Yeah.
And we can chat with them about what's your connection to West Concord, you know, what makes you interested in this committee? Rather than, and, and if there's nothing that seems to be a fit because of whatever their interests are. Then we don't necessarily recommend them for that reason. It's not like it's open.
Fifty other committees.
Yeah.
Let us hand you a green card that's not really green anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, plenty of opportunity, but I think, yeah, the whole point is to be as inclusive as possible, not exclusive.
Were there any other things you guys had flagged on the?
Um, I don't think there was anything else that we flagged in this committee charge, um. I've got notes written down about like budgeting and open space and that sort of thing, but I think. They don't necessarily fall within this charge here.
You know, we talked about that we should be having more regular, like twice a year meetings with the planning board.
Yeah. Does that belong in this charge, or is that just an informal arrangement today?
Um, it, it can be either. I mean, you can formalize it. Um, what we talked about was, you know, having like this meeting in the end of, you know, May, after town meeting. And then having another one in October.
Before the war.
I think it's good to document that for future committees so that the intention that you do that is clearly outlined.
A, a joint meeting, working session, cuz I think.
We can even put those dates, say the goal is to meet in May and November, so that.
Because, you know, it's, you know, the planning, the term, planning board shall evaluate. Um, I don't, I don't think the planning board has evaluated the effectiveness of West Concord Advisory Committee for, um, for a very, very long time, but. You know.
And, and what about having a liaison? To, from West Concord to the planning board and vice versa? I don't know if you wanna. State that, but I think that.
I think you guys did.
We did establish that, um, Barbara and Allison would both be keeping an eye on planning board agendas and. Coming to meetings when West Concord issues are discussed. But it seems like if, like if we're gonna hear from a West Concord developer, does it make sense for there to be something more? Um, established where we would get notified that you all have, uh, you know, a Tuesday meeting where a West Concord developer is coming to present and we. Could also, like, multiple of us come to the meeting to hear the information if we're available.
Um, so what, so that would actually, what we would do is something similar to this and quote, post a joint meeting.
Okay.
Um, so that it basically it's both, you know, with GAC and the planning board. Kind of deliberating together.
Yeah.
Um, when an applicant comes in with a presentation, so we would actually post that.
Okay.
So when, so I, I think that's where, you know, when something comes in. It's, you know, the conversation internally with, you know, both chairs saying, okay, you know, this is. This is the, the schedule for the application that we have to meet for, um, time reasons.
Yeah.
And we usually have a window of, you know, one, you know, one or the other meetings. Um, and so then it would be just. Really trying to, you know, coordinate which meeting is at which. And, you know, unfortunately, um. I, I think it ju- it, it would just come down to trying to coordinate fourteen people.
And I think, Pat, were you only? Did you volunteer?
No, I think.
Were you volunteered for?
Tac, cuz they meet at nine thirty.
Yeah, I said I could do, I could do a daytime meeting. But I would also.
But I, the planning board's gonna finalize their meetings on list, um, at their next meeting in June when they have a full board members.
Oh, membership. Yeah, we usually meet at seven thirty P M on the first Wednesday of every month, just in case that. You know, strikes any of you as being convenient. Um, and then, like, if there are developer plans to be reviewed. Would it make sense to try and schedule that for like the next upcoming planning board meeting of Tuesday at seven? Or the next W C A C meeting, seven thirty, you know, every first Wednesday, like maybe we have. An inventory of meetings we can play with in order to adhere those applications.
Yeah, so that's where the, the internal coordination would have to happen, cuz we have to. Um, a lot of times we have to post legal notices and, and, and if it's a big project that's actually going to the Board of Appeals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then it becomes, you know, trying, cuz those get scheduled out like a month and a half.
Okay.
So then it's a, a much more compressed type schedule.
Okay.
So then I, I, I think it's just the. Um, doodle poll to everybody, here are the potential dates and, you know, the, whichever column has the most. People, a quorum of each.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna ask that, if we need to have a quorum of each committee, okay.
If it's, yeah, if it's gonna be a, a joint meeting.
I mean, I think you could have two people from a committee, right, if they're sitting in it just watching, not deliberating. Is that true?
Um, you could each have three.
Three, okay.
There's a quorum for both of you as well.
So you can have, yeah.
Okay.
So if it was informational, you could have a maximum of three people.
Okay.
That's the keynote where I guess. That's good.
And would a developer care if it was them presenting to three of each of our committee or it's a larger group, like? Cuz we might not be voting on a particular day, we would just be listening to the information, right? Um, I, I. Um. If it requires them, one less meeting to come out. Okay, yeah, cuz it gets recorded anyway, and other members who couldn't make the meeting can always watch a recording if then they wanna weigh in on a subsequent meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, and from, from our perspective, it's, you know, a streamlining process.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, you know, this, this is the process.
Yeah.
Um, you'll be making a, a presentation to a joint, you know, a joint meeting of both and. That's just the way it is, so. Okay, I'm not concerned about that from a procedural standpoint.
Okay.
Yeah, the more we can streamline it, the better.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and even, you know. Um, like state law for a project that the planning board may have to have. Move on a subdivision, and the Board of Appeals rules on a special permit. Um, state law allows them to hold joint meetings, so. You know, I, you know, if, you could easily, let's say, three, four years from now. Something finally happens with the MCI Concord and you get your, you know, first. Application for some type of development, um, but it does require maybe a special permit. Um, you know, I, I can see, you know, that being, you know, this, you know, this is gonna be a joint meeting. You know, with. West Concord Advisory Committee, Planning Board, and the Board of Appeals. Um, and so you can, you can have joint meetings, there's nothing in the law that says you can't. But.
But in that case, I mean, but the planning board would take a vote of planning board members, it wouldn't include votes of West Concord Advisory.
No, I, but I, but I think you have that initial meeting where everybody comes.
Right.
Sees the same development, and then, you know, the planning board's gonna go back and have a conversation. And, you know, West Concord Advisory Committee will go back and have a conversation and write their recommendation letter. Um, and. You know, it does, you know, it cuts, cuts the number of meetings down for them, almost a half.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great, yeah.
Well, then it has everyone on the same page, instead of the, you know, the piecemeal. Stuff, yeah.
Strange gurgling coming from the.
At the developers.
When they switched over from heat to cool, every once, every of the, one of these units sounded like there was a bird stuck in it.
Yeah, it was, it was very, very creepy.
So I'm, I would, um, I'm probably gonna, um, suggest, cuz it's now quarter after, um, eight. Um, but go through and I can work with, um, Andrew and Susan and make. Um, edits to this, just based on tonight's conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Then. It can be sent out to the individual members, um, where they can, you can, you know, make your edits and comments and only. So we don't violate open meeting law, um, it'll only go back to, to Susan, and then the three of us can kind of. You know, consolidate and have, um, conversations and, and ultimately get to, um, a amended version that would be. Afforded onto the town manager and the select board for review consideration.
Okay. How do you keep everything straight?
Me?
Yes.
Um, I have a little pad of paper next to my bed. And I've learned to, to write in the dark. And then I just empty my brain at two in the morning.
And it's very effective.
Thank you.
We could have a group chat at two A M.
Yeah. I, I, oh. Um, and so I don't know if you wanted to ask.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we should ask for any public comment out there if anyone had a, who's in the room or, or not. But I think we've, uh, so. No, there isn't, there's one.
And as a member of our committee.
Oh, okay, so. We have, we have no public, barely any of it.
Only in the room.
So I guess with that, um.
Well, I'll, yeah, I'll move forward on this and, um, you know, work, work this year, over the next few weeks and. Um, and, and we chat about it and come back and. And it's great. That's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep pushing the, update the West Concord Master Plan, MCI, Baker Ave.
Yeah, I mean, let us know how we can help, honestly, like, call upon us if you need us to draft anything or give input.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, talk to the deputy town manager, um, and. See where, you know, the town wants to. To, you know, whether we do the full court press and.
Thank you for the copies of the master plan.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, that will be helpful.
Plan is there, too.
They're there, yeah, they're both over there.
Great, thank you.
So I will do that and let everybody know.
That is fantastic.
Thank you all for coming.
So you get to adjourn your meeting and.
Okay, can I, so I make a motion to adjourn it?
With no further business for the West. You can adjourn your meeting.
Okay, with no further business, but let's go to the advisory committee, our meeting is adjourned. Okay, with no further business, but let's go to the advisory committee, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Oh, there's two, two copies, oh, two copies, yeah, one for the registry and one for the, uh, way of course.
Um, but they sell this brand at Grass Up Russia.
The transition. I drew that decision, but. Absolutely, we can sign and sign this.
Yeah.
Can you hear us, Abby? Okay, yeah, can you come in and sign this at some point? Did you?
Oh, nice.
Okay. Sorry, there's, there's a lot of background chatter, sorry.
So these are the signature pages for the Registry of Deeds and the Land Board?
Yeah, I can come in and sign them tomorrow.
Okay, oh. Sometimes.
Yeah, I can pop in and sign them. We have a master plan from Heather, like I can always come by here and get one, but I think, um. I've got this, I just don't have the thing that's bound, that's, okay, yeah, but I can always drop by and get it from Heather, yeah. Thank you so much.
Oh, who's this?
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Here's the next agenda item we have is administrative business, so we'll open the floor up to public comment, or general public comment is limited to fifteen minutes, but no more than three minutes allocated to any one speaker.
Do you want to come up?
I'm more comfortable. Um, and then general public comment is limited to those items which are not on the agenda. Do we have any? Members of the public who are interested in speaking on any subject that is not part of the agenda? Okay, with that, I will move on to the next thing, the planning board twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five goals and projects map. Including sort of. There are TV, it's about to shut off. No, it's the elements. Little touchscreen. Two hundred and eighty-eight seconds. Four minutes.
Want me to just go through the draft memo?
I guess, especially where it's changed between the ones we discussed last week, because I know there were a few items that were added.
So I broke out, um, I added number one, which is the MBTA community zoning. Because we technically have not finished, we've made it to town meeting, um, we have not received our pre-compliance review letter. Which I'm gonna ask for the email tomorrow. Um, and then once we receive that, we know whether we're in compliance or whether they have found some defaults in it. And, uh.
Then we'll have a discussion, right?
Well, we'll get the form, we'll get the, our formal pre-compliance letter. And there's gonna be things, you know, they're gonna, whether they say everything's great.
It will have content.
It will have content that we will need to either, um, address or not address. Um, and then from there, if it's things we need to address, then the planning board will need to strategize on how to move forward and, um, address those. So that's why I added, um, I added number one, um, which is somewhat different than, um, the rules and regs.
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm.
Well. So then the only, the only other, um, updates was, um. The list of potential zoning bylaw amendments, um, I just expanded out the ones that were on the list like site plan review, um, and that was something that the. Board table from last time, um, the discussion on the industrial zoning districts and expanded based on. Um. Uh, what the board discussed adding that, um, the parking requirements, I just, I just. Added that line out and even though it's a separate, um, item further, um, and then. A lot more information on the additional dwelling units, um, discussions, um, and that is, um, specifically based on. Uh, the zoning Board of Appeals meeting, um, that was two weeks ago on the ninth, I believe it was, um, and the correspondence that's coming. Through on the items that the Board of Appeals is discussing.
Oh, what? Um, Jonathan, I'm sorry, by making faces, is, is it additional dwelling units or accessory dwelling units?
In, in the memo, it says additional.
I think it's a.
Accessory.
I always thought it was accessory. Oh, wow.
I knew what you were talking about.
It does work, okay.
What is additional?
I think it is additional.
No, that's okay, I just always thought it was accessory.
I, I think.
It, it's an accessory structure, but it's an additional dwelling unit. That's, yeah, that's, I always, I always thought of it as accessory.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's.
It's, it's still kind of a relatively new.
Yeah, thing, yeah.
Well, it's been around.
I mean, it's been around, but now it's seventy-four. I'm just saying it's been more, you're starting to hear about it more, people doing it more now.
Okay, yeah, a lot going on there.
But I'll double check. No, that's. It wouldn't surprise me, that's, that's kind of where I'm at these days.
No, it was the town council, it called it additional dwelling unit, in his memo, that was part of the, today, so that's, that's where I checked.
I'm pretty sure it's additional.
Yeah.
I'm gonna check.
Okay.
Um, so I tried to, you know, I tried to provide, you know, un, enough information to give people an idea, but not to really. Go into the, the nitty gritty, because it is gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a conversation.
Mm hmm.
About those two topics, or three topics. Um. And then, uh. The only other, um, ADU was, oh, the building commissioner brought, um. Brought up the, currently the, um, accessory dwelling unit. Section allows the board to waive, by special permit, grant a waiver to allow an ADU on a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot size. Um, and that's what the bylaw says, but it doesn't say, if it doesn't meet the minimum lot frontage. So there's lots of lots in town that, you know, if it's residence B, it's twenty thousand square feet. A hundred and. Twenty-five feet of frontage. They may have forty thousand square feet and only a hundred feet of frontage. And so.
Also, there's no, there's no mechanism for.
More, no mechanism for that, but there's a mechanism, you're gonna be in residence B and only have fifteen thousand square feet. And a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, you can go for a special permit.
That's interesting.
So, um, you know, there's, there's a couple larger lots and they didn't have enough, you know, that were the current frontage, so. Um, the commissioner, building commissioner asked the board to consider that, and I think it's reasonable.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Does that make sense? You know, you're gonna have, you and I are certainly gonna have to start meeting like once a week.
Yeah.
So just keep your notes.
Well, I was, you know, I was trying to find this document, because there was something in there that I was confused about.
That's this document that I'm, that's for you.
Okay.
That's the zoning bylaw, you're gonna get a whole big binder, um, and then that's your copy of the actual.
This memo that, that we're looking at is in here?
No.
No, that's what I was, there was some, there was a point in there that, oh, yeah, I tried to print it out, but the draft blocked everything out.
Um, so I will also make sure, um, that Heather now knows that you're appointed, you're nominated, appointed, and you're gonna be sworn in tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll just walk, I just, just walk into the town clerk's office, okay.
In your ID.
Um, so you'll get added to the distribution list.
I know what was confusing for me in this memo, can I?
Yeah, so please.
So, so there's a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four goals and projects, and then under point two, the two thousand and eighteen envisioned conquered. It just says, this project was completed and used each year to help the planning board determine what tasks to focus on for the coming year. That's referencing the, the envision conquered document creation.
Um, yep, so in the, in the, I think it's chapter five in the envision conquered is the action items.
Right.
List, and it goes through and lists goals, action items, and, and then, um. Which border committee would be involved and I, I, since, since two thousand and nineteen or eighteen. The planning board, we made a matrix of the. The eighty-four goals where the planning board or a hundred and something, where the planning board or planning division is referenced, and the board went through them. And created this matrix, which you will also get. Um, so every year the planning board goes through that matrix, um.
Okay, that's what was confusing, because then it showed up again in the next year, the exact same.
Yep, so they go through it, um, every year, um. Let me just be easier for me to show you. And that'll get sent to the plant, um, along with this memo to the select board. So this is. This is the matrix, and you can, you can, yeah, you can move up, so it goes through and, um, these are the goals. Um, that are done, I, um, there's the big ideas. So there's the, there's the, the section in the, in the long range plan, the goal, the action item, and then the planning board has gone through. And provided an update, and they've, um, tried to, um, identify which projects they're working on. What projects, you know, action items, one to two years. Um, you know, three to five or six out, or if there really is another border committee, that it's not the planning board, and so they go through this list every year and update it.
That's good.
All right, thank you, that, yeah. Um, so I think. Those were the only new items. And then I, I just, I expanded on the combined business residents. And so we, um, Andrew and I did have a conversation with, um, Emily Ennis, the consultant who's working with the board on the MBTA communities, site plan rules and regs. Um, and. She felt being able to segue into, um, looking at the combined business residents. Um, zoning was something that kind of fit in really well, because, um, a lot of communities. Are, are thinking of it, so. Okay, it'll be in the forefront again.
So I don't know if anyone had anything to add to the, the memo as far as the, um. Draft goals were concerned, but, um, do we need a vote on those? Is that how that works?
Um.
Or do they just kind of become the goals that then get reported?
Um, I think, uh, that u- usually the board does, um, you know, vote to e- accept the, um, memo and forward it to the select board. Oh, sorry, I've been talking too much.
And I, I will, um, note that we did receive one public comment, um, regarding the boards, um. Regarding the board's, um, proposed goals, uh, by email, and that was distributed earlier today to the, um. Um, to the board, so hopefully had a chance to look and see what you thought. Um, I guess with that, I will, um, take, what is, I guess, a roll call vote regarding accepting the, the, um, proposed, um. Goals and project memo as, as presented today. Um, do I have a second?
A second.
Awesome, and we'll just go in order, um, Abby Flanagan?
Hi.
Linda Millie?
Yes.
Robbum? And I, Andrew Borman, or yes, so that is unanimous to move forward with that. And the next thing is the, um, planning board liaison and town planner updates. So, um, since we do not have our liaison assignments necessarily squared away yet, I don't believe many people will have updates on that, but. If you do, now's a good time to share them, and if not, um. I'll turn it over to Liz, but again, I guess.
Um, I'm trying to think what's going on, um, the historical commission and the historic district's commission are, uh, kicking off. The update to the historic preservation plan, um, and there, if you, if people haven't done it already, there's a survey, um, so please take the survey.
Sorry, I'm just looking at Abby's.
Yeah.
I apologize, this is Georgie, Georgie has decided the meeting should be over, and she is, she's kindly requested. She is, she, she can wait a few minutes.
I thought we were gonna get public comment.
Yeah, she's, she's raising her paw.
Um, trying to think what else, um, there's, uh, there's, there's so much, so much going on. Um, I can, um, give everybody an update for, uh, the. Thorough comprehensive permit, um, the applicant is, um, going back, um, to the drawing board basically, and looking at redesigning the project. Based on, um, feedback they got at the first, um, public hearing, uh, the site block. Um, and also, um, the chair and one other board member held a working session with. Uh, the board's consulting team, and then the applicant and their consulting team to go over those issues and concerns that were raised at both, um, those public meetings. And, um, they are doing some due diligence, um, to be able to modify the design if the septic system has to move, there's some. Groundwater analysis they have to do, but, um, more importantly, they are. Um, looking at, um, being able to redesign the project with the driveway or the development coming off the existing driveway. For the thorough club, which, um, will solve quite a few of the impacts and issues and concerns that were raised, so. Um, the last week, the Board of Appeals, um, continued, uh, and the public hearing was continued to July twenty. Fifth.
Would, July twenty-fifth. But would that trigger us, anything for us regarding the thorough club, if they have to, if it impacts their parking and their previous coverage?
Um. Possibly, yes.
Okay.
Um, but I, I think there, um, the applicant, um. Um, but I, I think there, um, the applicant, um, will likely need. For the thorough club, um, will, well, I don't think that impervious coverage, um, maybe. Maybe an issue, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm not sure. I just, I just know that.
Um, but, um, they would have to get site plan approval as part of that project. And they will also need, uh, use variance, um, cause currently. Because the driveway would be crossing across their property, multifamily is not permitted. So they would need a use variance for the thorough club to allow the driveway for, um, two seventy-five. But I, I, I think the case can be made, um, you know, it's. It's actually created less impact. You know, to the others which are residential, so it's, it's not a case where you're granting a use that's not consistent with the neighborhood. So. Yeah, so I think there's gonna be that concurrent, um, process, so. All that comes to mind.
And, um, the only other item we had tonight was meeting minutes from the March sixth meeting.
Yep.
Uh, that we received earlier today. I had a time, chance to read through it and didn't have any comments, but I also didn't try to wordsmith it either, so.
No, but the, the copy everybody got today was, um, Sue did provide.
Oh, excellent. So someone did wordsmith.
Yes, yes. Someone did word, wordsmith it, so I don't know if. I looked at it, so.
I can vote on it as well.
So, um, I'm, I moved that we prove the minutes from.
March sixth.
March sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Sorry, a second. Okay, um, do a roll call vote, Abby Flanagan?
I.
Linda Miller?
Yes.
Yes, and Andrew Borman is a yes, so those are done. And with that, we have no more work items, business to discuss, and I hereby close to maybe.